Yes, Chairman, it has.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Candell, Ms. Larmine, Mr. Muller, Mr. Shaw, Ms. Sataka, Mr. Velosen, Mr. Williams, Councilman Zabrowski, Chairman Tai. We have a quorum.
Resolution of resolution?
None this evening.
Can I have the motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting?
We don't have any minutes this meeting.
Communication agenda?
None this evening.
Okay, site plan subdivision?
We have one application number PB 25-01, Tainan Auto Services Include Inc., preliminary and final site plan, 2069 Highway 35, South Amboy, Block 428, Lots 1, 2, 2.01.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board members, Board professionals and public. Kenneth Pape of the firm Heilbronn Pape on behalf of your applicant this evening. If I, before we begin a substantive presentation, I'd ask if your either counsel or secretary could confirm receipt of our notices, confirm that the board has jurisdiction of the application and that we can proceed. Thank you, sir, that's very kind. This is an application to repurpose an existing building and an existing site. I think that the, all of you have more complete understanding of some of the activities that took place on this property over the last decade. Our clients purchased the property in November of 2024. They abandoned the prior use of the property and the repurposing that they're asking of this board is to use the buildings on the property for the maintenance of their bus fleet. Not the store, it's not a bus depot, it's not a major repair facility, it's a building where they would maintain a fleet of buses that they operate from another site. The presentation will be made briefly by the, Mr. Wong, who is the tenant, he is tenant auto. I'm going to ask that he, at the beginning of the presentation, describe what his business is, the hours of operation that he proposes, the number of employees and certain restrictions on his activities that were discussed during the last nine months with Mr. Michansky. Not that Mr. Michansky gave anything that said, "You must do this", but there were restrictions that were suggested and we're going to place that on the record. And then Kiara Nissen is here. She is a professional engineer responsible for the presentation of the plans to you. And after we go through her credentials, I'll ask that she assist in the presentation of the site plan and go through your staff reports. I'd be remiss if I didn't identify to you, the property owner, 2069 Property LLC is represented by Ms. Ling Yang. She is here as the property owner's representative. She is here out of respect for the board. She has no testimony, but I ask that she appear before you. And Mr. Wong, who is here, is the gentleman whose business would be operated from the property, which would be the bus, bus maintenance. And with your permission, Mr. Chair, I would begin by calling Mr. Wong and we have a series of short questions that go through so that the nature of his business becomes part of the record. That's acceptable? Thank you. Mr. Wong, if you could come forward. You're going to be asked to be sworn in, so they're going to ask that you raise your right hand and they're going to swear you in to confirm that you're, they're going to tell the truth.
Okay, yes. Yes.
If you could, oh, thank you. Okay, thank you. Just one moment. I'm going to ask if you could, are you, are, you are the owner of Tainan Auto Service?
Yes.
That's your business?
Yes.
Oh, surely. They would like your full name on the record.
Yeah, my name is Zhengrong Wang. The first name Zhengrong, Z-H-E-N-G-R-O-N-G, last name Wang, W-A-N-G.
Let me just, you got it? You're good? Okay, very good. Mr. Wong, your, Tainan Auto Service Inc. is the name of your business, correct?
Yes.
And now, what is that business operation? What, what will it do at this property?
Yeah, we are doing the, the, the maintenance of our bus fleet.
Do you provide any maintenance services for anyone other than your own buses?
No.
This would not be a business that's open to the general public?
No, no.
What type of maintenance do you do on buses? Do you do major repairs? What is it that you do?
We're doing the routine maintenance, no major repair.
Light bulbs, tires, windshield wipers?
Yeah, yeah.
That type of general maintenance? Will you agree, and if you agree, this would become part of the record, will you agree that all of the services that you perform on the buses will be inside the building? No services outside of the building?
Yes.
That's an important representation. I know that neighbors are going to be very concerned that you do not do any outdoor activities. Do you have established hours of business, business hours that you would like to run your business?
Yes, we are running Monday, right now, Monday, Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. But we would like to attend a permission to have a hour on Saturday, if necessary, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Not all, not every Saturday, but just in, just in, just if necessary.
8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. are hours of operation. You're comfortable with those being restrictions on your business?
Yes, but the employee may arrive earlier than 8:00 a.m., sometimes 7:00 a.m., but we will not start working before 8:00 a.m.
How many workers do you intend to have at the site?
We not, we have five.
Five, would that include the administrative people, people in the business office as well as the mechanics?
Yes.
That's, you're comfortable that that's the number that you need to operate your business?
For now, yes.
Mr. Wong told me that five was the number. I said, "Five is a very small number. I'm going to ask the board for a little bit of opportunity of growth, of two additional employees. They don't exist at this time, but we're asking that you consider a maximum number of employees of seven. No work on Sundays?
No.
Closed on Sundays?
Yes.
There's a single-family home on the property. It's in the front of the property. Are you prepared to abandon the use of that as a single-family home?
Yes.
And I believe that the representations that were made in the application is that that would be storage of parts for your maintenance and on the second floor, you would like to have an office?
Yes, correct.
All, the office and the storage would not be separate businesses, would be part of your business?
Yes.
And I think the last question I have is, will there be any other businesses on the property?
No.
Just the business that you've described to the board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, those were the questions that I asked Mr. Wong to be prepared to begin the hearing. He is available to you and Board members now or at any time during the evening.
Just one, Chairman. Mr. Wong, what size is your bus fleet?
It's a coach bus.
I mean, in terms of how many buses?
Fifteen.
Fifteen buses? Thank you.
It's 45 feet.
So does that mean that there'll be a maximum of, at any one time, of 15 buses? No more nor less?
Ten.
Ten, thank you.
But because, yeah, only normally ten in the, yeah.
Mr. Wong, where is your bus depot? Where, the buses?
The bus depot is in Queens and Brooklyn.
Excuse me, when you say repairs, could you elaborate more? What about oil changes where, to the environment that it drips? Were you doing oil changes and spark plugs and stuff like that?
Oh, yeah.
Inside the building?
Yes.
Okay, then, thank you. Mr. Wong, thank you.
Hi, thank you very much.
Mr. Wong, you'll need to stay through the whole?
Sure.
Very good, thanks. The professional witness is Kiara Nissen. And if we could have Ms. Nissen sworn, we'll share with you her credentials and we'll make a substantive presentation of the proposed revisions to the site.
I do.
Ms. Nissen, take a few moments to share with all your education and your professional licensure.
Yes, K-I-E-R-A-N as in Nancy, I-S-S-E-N. I received a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from NJIT in 2018. I received a Master's of Engineering in Civil Engineering from Stevens Institute of Technology in 2020. And I received my PhD in Civil Engineering from Stevens Institute of Technology in 2023.
And Ms. Nissen, what licenses do you hold?
I have a professional engineer's license in the state of New Jersey.
It's your license and good standing tonight.
Yes.
Mr. Chair and Board members, may I ask that you accept Ms. Nissen as an expert engineer?
Should you accept?
Thank you. I'd ask that the first thing that you do is identify the exhibits that you intend to rely upon for your presentation and then we'll go through some of the outline.
I have two exhibits tonight. I have our landscape plan, that is sheet four of our submitted site plan set. And I just have an aerial exhibit of the site. The picture was taken, or the aerial was taken in March, on March 6, 2025. So this is a recent picture just showing the surrounding area.
Counselor, the first exhibit is part of the set. It's been colorized, but it's part of the set. Do we mark it? So A1, is that acceptable? So A1 is the colorized landscape sheet. Which sheet is it?
Sheet four.
And if you could read off the, the last revision date?
July 22, 2025.
Thank you. And the second one is not part of a set. It's an exhibit that was prepared for the presentation. What is the date of that aerial photograph?
August 6, 2025.
There's some yellow lines that have been added. Is that, those yellow lines were added by your office to identify the perimeter of the client's property?
Yes.
Counselor, A2. I look to you to use the exhibits. If you could begin, describe the property generally, describe the, its location. And so, I'm going to say the background information before we get to the substance of the site.
The property is located on the southbound side of New Jersey Route 35. It is bounded by commercial properties to the north and residential properties to the south. It is Block 428, Lots 1, 2, and 2.01. It is approximately 1.98 acres.
And what physical improvements are on the property today?
There is a two-and-a-half-story residential building fronting the site. There is a shed and there is a one-story shop building.
You could just, I think there's, there's some improvements that are called vestigial remnants of the, of the landscape business, including some bins and other improvements on the site, all of which are proposed to be removed?
Yes, there are a few existing bins to the rear of the property, some existing pavement, some existing gravel, all of which, except some of the gravel, is proposed to be removed.
And if, very simply, I, I described what our client's purpose is, but lawyers can't testify. So if you would describe what our client's purposes are of, for this property?
The clients are asking to repurpose the existing site? They are, they are planning to remove the existing bins as they're no longer needed and to repurpose the site as this bus maintenance business. They are also proposing to re-vegetate the front yard buffers and increase the buffer to the residential properties to the south and reduce the overall impervious area by almost 7,000 square feet.
Before we came before this board and over the last year, we have been working with other governmental agencies. Ms. Nissen's firm secured a letter of no interest from the New Jersey Department of Transportation and that is part of what we submitted. And we also received a letter from the county stating that they, this is exempt, they have no requirements. And it's our understanding that those are the outside agency requirements. If you could, I think, there were certain variances that were previously granted for the site. I think we have, we have seven square feet of asphalt for which we would be asking for a variance. Before the hearing, Ms. Nissen and I looked at it. The seven square feet of asphalt is just, we're going to remove that. We just simply don't need it. So no new variance. But if you could just give the, what variances were previously granted for the buildings that are on the site? And if you could confirm, no exacerbation of any of those?
There is an existing variance from the front yard setback requirement as it relates to this existing garage. The 25 feet is required, 21.6 feet was provided. That was from a zoning board approval from March 25, 2001. There was also a variance from providing a 50-foot buffer to residential zones, which was granted from a zoning board approval on March 25, 2001, that was to the rear of the property, to this farmland.
We have no, no or exacerbated variance really as part of what we're asking this board to consider?
No.
I'm going to ask if you could, let's go through elements of the site plan systematically. Grading. What grading, if any, of the site is required to accommodate what our client is asking of the board?
We are not proposing any changes to the existing grade.
The grading as is, is functional and stable?
Correct.
Stormwater management. It's my understanding that there is a stormwater system in place that was built as part of a prior approval. If you could briefly describe that stormwater system and advise if it continues to be adequate for the proposed use of the site?
There is an existing subsurface infiltration basin approximately here. It is shown on the site plan, on our existing conditions plan. And it's shown here as where we are not vegetating. It is operating as far, as, as expected, that we have looked at it after rainstorms and it seems there's no accumulation of water. The site is grading towards that area. So it is our conclusion that it is operating as designed.
You did make the comment that no grading is required, but I know that during our review of the site, we acknowledged that there was some water leaving our site that was entering our neighbors' properties. I think we figured out that there was some blockage of the drainage. On this plan that's being presented to the board, can you state that all of the stormwater that is generated by our site is now directed to the catch basins into that drainage system?
Yes.
There's a landscaping element that's on the plan that you're presenting. I'd like to go right to the landscaping, just a little out of sequence. The landscaping that, there was a landscape contractor here. There's a lens, as you are aware, that landscape contractor may not have run the facility in a way that anyone would be proud. The materials that were planted that shouldn't have been planted, there were materials that were planted that died, there were materials that were removed from the site. We have a landscaping plan that we'd like to offer to you as a board and the borough and also to our neighbors. There's an emphasis of landscaping along the common boundary where we have residential neighbors. There's an increase from 50 feet to 100 feet. Your ordinance says 50. We, Ms. Nissen and her team found a way to get it up to 100 feet. If you could just take us through the landscaping, begin with the southern border and then take us all the way around up to Route 35?
We are proposing a significant amount of plantings along the southern border, all as much as we can fit in this strip of our property line without going into the DOT right of way. These are mostly evergreen trees. We are proposing six new ornamental trees, 147 evergreen trees and 30 shrubs. The shrubs are to help create the understory so you can see a wall of green. Like Ken said, the buffer to the residential property, we increased from 50 feet to 100 feet and vegetating as much as we can while avoiding planting on the existing sanitary sewer easement that goes through the property as well as the subsurface infiltration basin. The plants that we are proposing include Green Giant Abervianti, Colorado Spruce, American Holly and the Eastern Red Cedar, as well as a couple others. In addition, we are proposing plants along the frontage of the property to soften the view from the highway.
There is on our client's property a fence that appears to be associated with one of our neighbors. We have no objection to that fence being on our property. And it's my understanding from talking to that gentleman that in the past, a prior property owner may have given him authority to put the fence on our client's property. And the fence is there for security purposes, to keep people who might have been doing untoward things in the neighborhood out of the neighborhood. We have no objection to the fence continuing. But I wanted to make a point. Because the fence is on our property and because the other side of the fence, although it's on our client's property, is used as part of our neighbors, we didn't landscape it. We could take the fence down. We could replace the fence. We could landscape on the other side of the fence. Whatever our neighbor prefers, we can do. But we did leave the fence that's there in place and we landscaped around it on our side only. But we, with permission, we would never ask to go on someone's property, but with permission, we could go on theirs to do landscaping there if it was requested. Across the rear of the property, if you could just, what's behind the property? What's, what, to the west, what's, what's back there?
That is farmland.
And, and if you could describe the topography from our site to what's behind us?
Right now, everything on-site grades towards this system. So there's no water that would be leaving our property towards that rear.
And the landscaping that you have is intended to be a buffer, but we, we have no, no one living back there?
Correct.
And it's my understanding that there's some substantial wetlands back there. If we could talk about the lighting, the existing lighting and what our client is proposing for lighting?
This is one of the waivers we are requesting from the requirements of the borough for lighting. We are proposed to illuminate the shop building. We have one building on, one light on the building and one pole near the entrance. The pole near the entrance is for anyone turning into the property. And the light on the building is to help illuminate the work area that we are sensitive to any concerns from the neighbors. So we do not want to illuminate this whole area when all of the work is going to be done in this building and the real concern is for the employees coming in and out.
And we would be most willing to turn lights off after the employees leave the site unless we were asked to leave them on for security purposes. I think that we chose a 3,000 Kelvin, a soft light?
Correct.
3,000 Kelvin LED light that could be adjusted?
Correct.
And that's what's a part of your design?
Correct.
Trash and recyclable collections and storage, where would that be?
There is an existing concrete pad in the northwest corner of the site where refuse is stored. It is currently picked up by a private hauler and that will be continued.
And signage, is there any new signage that our client has asked for?
There's no proposed new signage. We have proposed two numbers on the two-story building to ensure emergency vehicles can find the property.
So the installation of numerals on the building, but there's no, our client has no requirement of signage, so we're not asking the board for signage? If you could, a summary of what we just went through. Just, what are the, from your perspective as the design engineer, what do you see the improvements to the site and to the community from what we're, what's being offered?
There will be improvements to the traveling public. The site will appear cleaned up and there will be improved visuals from Route 35 and in this jug handle with the increase in plantings, as well as increases, improvements to the residential properties. The additional landscaping will improve and enhance the existing vegetation and provide, provide more than the required buffering. And as this is a low-intensity use, there will be a reduction in traffic to the prior use as well as that decrease in impervious surface. So there will be less stormwater runoff off the site.
From working with the borough professionals and from talking with some of the neighbors, we learned that the prior occupant, owner occupant, created a driveway, apparently illegally, without any approvals. And that driveway came out, if you could just show where that driveway came out? Came out on that thin stem of land. There's no, there was no DOT permit. There was no permission from the borough. And that activity, amongst other things, damaged landscaping that was in that area. As Ms. Nissen has shown, that area is proposed to be re-landscaped, edge to edge. We were also asked, and I don't recall who gave the question, but I memorialized it, that we put a restrictive covenant on our property, that we record with the county clerk that we have no right of access through that portion of the property so that in perpetuity, that activity that happened improperly cannot happen again. We would have no objection to working with your council to prepare an appropriate restrictive covenant so that does not happen again. We were also, it was also brought to our attention that prior property owners introduced materials on the site and we were, it was told that they believed that the materials that were introduced included millings. Our engineers went out to the site. They didn't, they didn't drill. They went out and they cored 12 to 18 inches and did not find millings. But if there are millings where there's landscaping, it would not be appropriate. So our commitment to the board is that wherever landscaping is proposed, we will excavate any material that is not consistent with healthy plants and replace that materials in those areas. We, other than the information from the neighbors, we do not have firsthand knowledge of that. But the commitment is, when we're landscaping, as we're showing, we'll make certain that the soils that are not consistent with growth are removed. And I look to you, Mr. Chair and Board, as to how that would be monitored. I suspect it would either be your engineer plan or one of the borough professionals so that that could be confirmed. I think, Ms. Nissen, that we have gone through the elements of the site plan. And as I promised before we move to the next phase, is there anything that I missed that you would like to add?
Yes, I'd just like to add that we have a few waivers specifically from the, to keep the site in accordance with what was previously approved. A waiver from providing hairpin striping for all parking spaces and from providing all parking lots and loading area with concrete or Belgium block curbing and from providing sidewalk throughout the site and along the frontage. That this is largely existing, largely maintaining the existing use of the property. And, um, and just that we are restriping the parking spaces for a total of 12 parking spaces.
We have no guests, we have no visitors, we have no customers. We have five employees and I've asked you to allow that to grow to seven. So the 12 parking stalls should be much more than we would, we would need. And as I indicated, the maximum number of buses that would be stored on the site would be 10. And I don't think we pointed to where the bus storage is proposed. Let's do that.
That's back here.
So on the other side of the landscape? So on the other side of the landscape area is where the bus storage is proposed. You had the opportunity to review the staff reports that were generated by the board's professionals, Corr- yes?
I'm sorry, I missed your question.
Have you had the opportunity to review the professional staff reports generated by the engineer and planner for the borough?
Yes.
And are there any elements in those plans, anything that is requested by the professionals that you cannot do, or can you comfortably advise the board and the professionals that you can and will address their technical requirements?
We can and will address the technical requirements.
We also had the benefit of convening with your engineer to go over his report to get a more complete understanding of that so that that's not a hollow statement, that's a statement that's made after reviewing a staff report and together with Mr. Wilder. Mr. Chairman, that is your applicant's direct presentation. We are available for examination, and welcome, where you take us next?
There we go, that's better. I think you touched on pretty much every question in my report, and I thank you for that. One quick question clarification, since there's oil changes and other types of maintenance occurring in the building, could you please briefly describe what type of flooring, is the flooring sealed?
It's the interior, it's a concrete floor. We can confirm with, I guess it would be Mr. Mashinsky to confirm that the floor is intact, and if any ceiling is required, we certainly can add that. But it's, it's a solid monolithic concrete floor.
Okay, thank you.
And the oil changes are inside, and the oil is removed by a licensed hauler.
I'm just curious, for the neighbors, buses let off exhaust fumes. Do you have like a filtering system or something so it doesn't travel out into the neighborhood?
We would agree that when the vehicles are in the building, being serviced, they're turned off, and we would agree that there's no idling of the, of the buses in, in the storage area. They're brought in, they're parked, they're then brought in the building, and they're turned off while they're being serviced.
But how would you measure it that we would know that it's not affecting our neighbors? The exhaust systems?
It would be no different than the traffic that's out on the highway, it'd be no different than the vehicles that were previously on this site. What we can do is we can say that they will not be idling, they will come on the site, the motors will be running to get to the site, they'll be turned off, and when they're in the building, they'll be turned off. That's the commitment we can make.
You're saying the fumes from the buses are the same as fumes from a car?
No, from, but from the tractors and trucks that were there previously, diesel fumes. Yeah.
I appreciate you sort of agreeing to everything in my letter. Some of the items are sort of conditions of approval, if you would, so I just want to confirm, confirm those. So I had recommended that trash pickup not occur before 8:00 AM or after 6:00 PM, that's an acceptable condition?
Yes.
Mr. Wong had mentioned that employees might arrive on-site and up to an hour before the site opens. I assume these vehicles, when they're backing up, are going to have the beeping noise?
Employees will be coming in their own cars.
Right, I just want to make sure no buses are being moved prior to 8:00 AM.
Agreed, no move, no work on buses and no movement of buses prior to 8:00 AM, just employees coming to the site.
Regarding the gravel that you intend to leave on-site, obviously, these are large vehicles. The gravel is sufficient to support these vehicles?
Ms., well, we're comfortable that it is, but we are, as we had indicated, if you, and I know we had this conversation, if you felt that an asphalt overlay was required, we could do that. Knowing the vehicles that have been on there and the fact that there were very heavy vehicles there for a long time, and that these buses would always be empty buses, we did have a comfort level, but we would defer to your good guidance.
Yeah, I take no issue with the gravel, I just do want to make sure that the property is continually maintained, so if all of a sudden there is rutting, that it gets repaired quickly, because once it starts, if it's not maintained, it'll get worse.
Understood, understood.
And then the last comment I have is relative to the thinning of the vegetation. Again, I appreciate you agreeing to my comments in my letter, but obviously, any healthy vegetation that is damaged or removed during the thinning process, that would be replaced in accordance with the borough requirements.
Borough requirements, and one thing that we'd like to discuss with the board, we're offering various evergreens as the primary planting material, but we're, we have some existing trees, we have, we'd like to save what we can, and we'd like to be able to work with the borough to create a more complete understory. I think that we, in addition to all that is shown, I think that an understory where there's existing trees that are going to be thinned and saved, the understory would be beneficial. And if, I would hope that there'd be no issue with that, and we could do it under your supervision.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
The stormwater system, you indicated that there was a blockage, and that's been cleared. Can you explain what that blockage was and how it impacted the stormwater system at that time? And also, a follow-up, has there been testing to ensure that, in fact, it now is operating efficiently?
I know some of what was causing the problem, as, and I know that the last property owner actually brought in berms and planted materials over portions of the drainage system, that, that's been removed. I don't know as to the actual inlets and what activity, that's you, that's you.
Yeah, so we, the blockage can discuss, and the, the, so your question was about testing of the system?
Well, no, it was twofold. Number one, what was the type of blockage and how was it cleared? And secondarily, has it been tested afterwards to show that the, the system is running efficiently?
So the water primarily gets to the system through inlets. I looked at the inlets myself, they are clear that there was blockage over the top of the system, and there was some, I believe some grading, like things in this portion of the site were not necessarily directed towards the system. Now, all the grades flow this way, and there is no more berm on top of the system, and the inlets are clear. My colleague went to the site after a lot of heavy rain and visually inspected the system to ensure that the water, that the system is draining in the time we would expect, and that, you know, it is functioning as we would expect.
Where the water, when that water goes into the drainage system, it must be, it's a system, there's a system under there, how does that system operate? Because that system had to be impacted by all that blockage.
So the system is a, this was from the approved 2001 plan, we did not design the system. So what was designed was a system with perforated pipe and stone, so the idea is the water will go in, that the HDP, HDPE pipe and stone can hold the structural loads, but water will go in and slowly infiltrate. From what we have observed, it is still operating as we would expect, that it is draining in the appropriate time. If material got in there, I can't necessarily say.
I, yeah, I said... There, I was a councilman and engineer. It occurred to me as you're, in line of questioning, the O and M manuals, the operation and maintenance manuals that are now mandatory by state law, weren't mandatory when that system was created in 2001. We're here before you in 2025. We have no issue with creating an O and M manual. The O and M manual imposes the responsibility of maintenance on the property owner in perpetuity and the annual reporting to the borough. And it's, if I didn't offer it, I'd be sharking it, so.
Appreciate that. A different question, related to circulation. I don't, a coach bus, a coach bus is a, is a full-size bus, I'm assuming. Correct. In order to be able to access, well, get into and out of the site, can you explain to me how that process, and will it impact traffic on Route 35, which is a rather heavily traveled road?
Sure.
On the last sheet of our site plan, I do show the circulation for a 45, or it's slightly more than 45-foot-long bus, but they have no problems operating this turn, there's no backing out back and forth over there. There is some maneuvering, that's why we have this area of gravel that buses will be able to pull in and use this area as kind of a turnaround to maneuver in the site, but there should be no issue for them turning into the road off Route 35.
And how about getting out onto Route 35? Would that be the same case, similar? I said, and I'm sorry, I'm not talking to my, I said, and is it similar for entrance, entry onto Route 35, because I don't know exactly, again, I don't heard that they'd not be going into two lanes of traffic?
I don't remember if that is on our plan, but I have run it, and it is fine.
And we did take the plan to the Department of Transportation. The plan that you're looking at, we took to the Department of Transportation, and in March, they issued a letter of no interest stating that they had no, no physical requirements to the, to the driveway.
And my final question, counselor, diesel engines require warming, so you indicated that they would not be idling, but I think it probably would be necessary for a bus to idle in order not to damage the vehicle. Is that not the case? So would your, would you be correct when you said there would be no idling in the storage area?
You need to help me, so the bus, the question of a councilman is, do you need to operate, does a bus need to warm up before you move it into the garage?
Usually, when I start a bus, it takes one and to two minutes to build up the air, that's it.
Is that same case in a cold, in the cold weather?
Yeah, yeah, only, it's only not warming up the engines, just for build up the air, because the brake system, the air system, we need to, it takes one, two minutes to build up the air, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome, thank you, thank you.
Chair. Man. Just want to be clear, there's not going to be any fueling pumps on the site at all? Okay. Did you monitor the drainage and stormwater situation during the past flooding that we had over the past two weeks? I know we got quite a bit of rain.
I did not see, I was not on-site during the last two weeks. I was able to observe the system this week, and there was no accumulation of water in the system.
How many bus parking spots are, do you have toward the southern portion of the property? There's 10 bu- bus parking spots?
10 storage spots, yeah.
And that, those are the ones that are, I'm looking on the, the site plan, they're toward the south of the property, toward Merritt Avenue?
Yeah, it might be easier if you're looking at the site plan on the circulation plan, which is the last sheet.
I'm there, yeah.
I have rectangles to see kind of each one, that was the, the rectangle represents the dimensions of the bus and how they would fit in there, it's very...
It looks tight, and it looks like there's only eight on here, am I not seeing the right? Okay. Let me see, oh, there's, okay, okay. I know one of the problems we had with this site that was impacting the residents, one, one certainly was the drainage, which we hope has been corrected with the blockage. The second one was dust from material that the prior property owner had stored, and that was pretty, I think that was almost creating a public nuisance. I just don't want to substitute dust for fumes from these buses, and I, I'm just asking, is there any other place to locate these buses that would have less of an impact on the neighbors in the south, particularly toward Merritt Avenue?
I'm not sure, I believe we were using that area to ensure the buses could pull in. That I would have to double-check if we could move some into that area.
Okay, because when you look at all the parking spots, it looks like it would be very difficult if you had to move one, if you had to take a bus that is parked in one of the southernmost spots and move it into the, it seems like it's a really tight area for 10 buses, and it seems like a lot of moving things around, it's going to create a lot of fumes and whatnot. I know we've had issues with fumes with our school buses too, because they park the buses near residential areas, and people are, are really impacted by that, so that's my concern, that we're trading dust now for fumes, and I'm going to make sure that we're doing everything we can to minimize that impact. My last issue is I know that you, you mentioned the word that you would address all the technical requirements in our professionals' reports, and make sure we clarify, there'll be compliance, it's not just addressing, you're going to comply with the requirements that our professionals put in their reports?
Resolution compliance, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The existing buildings, what condition are they in, and are you planning any improvements? All of the buildings are quite structurally sound, didn't plan on doing anything, there might be some paint that's necessary, but they're not, they're not in poor shape at all, and they're all sound. The residents won't be a residence, it would be a... You're going back to the oil-changing area, you talked about the surface being sealed. Are there curbs around for containment for any kind of spill? There is not containment, there's, there aren't, there aren't curbs inside. Okay, for a spill though, I mean, there's usually around any kind of change, a little, a curb, a six-inch curb going around as an area where that, where you're seeping oil. Is that part of the... It isn't currently, it's something that we could add, I think we, what we would have to, it would be like a mountable soft curbs that you could travel over so that when you're inside the building, there would be a curb around, set around where the doors are. We could do that. Who would we work with on that? Would that be construction or your office or...
Could work with my office. Yeah, you could work with my office, we'll figure out sort of the, the best solution. I don't know if there are portable mats that can be rolled out, and then, because I also don't want to create a tripping hazard or anything like that, but certainly we want to ensure that we're not, no spills do get outside of the building.
Understood.
To, to address some of the board members' concerns with the stormwater system and sort of how it has been taken care of or lack thereof in the past, my letter had asked that you guys do a video inspection of the sewer line to ensure that it's in sufficient condition. Would you agree to do the same thing for the stormwater system, to actually look to see if there's any accumulated sediment in the bottom of the drainage system?
Sure, video of the...
Yeah, so just go down the inlet, go through the pipe, and then get into the bottom of the system, and make sure you don't see standing water, you don't see a lot of sediment that's been accumulated. If it has been, you know, you can get a, a back truck to distribute it. I think that in, in connection with the O and M manual would put a lot of the, would address a lot of the concerns relative to stormwater.
Yes.
The buses that, of the fleet, are, they're, they're newer versions, right? So they do have clean air technology, right? Okay, so that means that the, they're a lot safer than buses 20 years ago, diesel buses that you're thinking of. As a diesel technician, I'm pretty familiar with that, so idle is a lot different nowadays also, so.
Motion?
Second.
Your motion will accept, all in favor?
Second.
Robert Duffy, one eleven Merritt Avenue, Saville, New Jersey. D U F F Y. I want to thank the council. I'm not as professional as Mr. Pape is, but I'm going to try my best. I'm going to try to paint a picture so everybody can see what's going on, like you were living there. Okay? I have a few questions for the property owner first, before I get into everything, okay? Thank you. My wife says yes. Mr. Wong, do you have? Uh, uh, hold on one minute. Do you have a EPA ID number? Environmental Protection Agency number, registered number. You don't have that?
Not yet.
Do you have any kind of ventilation in the building for exhaust? Ventilation fans? Okay.
The building does not have it, it's the commitment is that there's no.
I, I will read. I will read hazardous waste management, which this town doesn't have, but the state has. And he goes under the state. Bus repair shops, like any other vehicles repaired, facilities generate hazardous waste through various activities such as oil, solvents and other waste materials. Requirements, obtaining an EPA ID number, proper waste detention and record keeping, proper storage and hazardous material waste, providing appropriate training and employees handling hazardous waste. Employees. Developing and maintaining coagulating plan. I don't know what that is, but I'm just trying to show you. He's in business since November. And nothing of this has been done. Nothing, zero. Okay? I have. He, he does a lot more than just change oil and stuff. He cleans engines. Turns around and press, pressure washes buses that's going on the regular ground. I have pictures here. I don't have one for everybody like we did the last time, but I do have pictures you could circulate. Men cleaning the buses with air pressure. He was granted.
How many different photos are in that?
I got about thirteen.
Thirteen separate different photos? Okay, so let's mark that as O one and that will be a, a package of thirteen photos.
Yeah, the last time we were in front of you, the other neighbor, Jeff, made a whole booklet for everybody. On the plans that they gave to you or they showed us was city buses. These are coaches, not city buses. Coach, city buses run from twelve thousand to eighteen thousand. These coaches run from eighteen thousand to forty. And they're much longer and taller, bigger engines. Now, I also want to let yous know that I'm going to ask Mr. Pape a question. Mr. Pape, were you at my house the night before the original meeting, which would be June seventeen?
I was at your house on June seventeen.
Did you notice any smoke coming from the building, their main building?
There was smoke coming from.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, Ken. Thank you. This is what I'm telling you. I'm trying to draw a picture. A lot of this stuff that they do is not enforceable. You can break the law every day unless you're sitting there watching them. That's not our job. Our job is to live peacefully. I understand they went from fifty to a hundred feet. Oh, that's great. Do you know that property has four sides to it? Where they put the buses? The residential side. They could put those buses up top in front of their office building. No, they got to put it by our houses. And Mr. Wong knows his attorney was in contact with Andy and Kurt Mick of the township. And Kurt Mick, this is before they bought the property. Kurt Mick gave them, actually emailed it to them, three pages from CME that that property had to be cleaned up before they bought it. Mr. Berlou was supposed to do this.
That is exhibit O two. And do you have the date of that memo?
So if.
Date of the memo, please. Do you have a date on that?
This was March, July twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four.
So what I'm saying is they want to be great neighbors. They want to be the best neighbors. Well, they didn't show it yet and they're there six months. If they only put a shovel in the ground, it would have been something. They did nothing. And then you talk about the runoff. The runoff on that property is because of the, the road they Berlou put in is packed down. That's why the trees are dying. Has to be taken out so the trees, it's in that report from CME. They said they were going to do it. They said they were going to fix that before they, when they bought the property to Kurt Mick. Andrew also. They gave them the okay to operate with three buses. That's what Kurt Mick's telling me.
Oh, they're not allowed to operate at all.
Well, then, then they've been operating wrong for six months. They shouldn't have been operating. Period. So what I'm trying to tell you is how do we trust these people? Once you give them the okay to do it, how do we keep them confined? You can't. You can't. It's not enforceable. Best thing to do, knock it down. Let them go somewhere else. You're in litigation now with this town with buses. We don't need another one on our hands. And I know this is a different application. But we, we're as neighbors, are not going to stand there and take pictures. We got lucky, we, they do all the things and those pictures are wrong. The bus, city buses, I got a picture of a city bus in there and I got pictures of their buses. These are coaches. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of clarifications on some of the comments that were made. The, in January, there was a letter that was issued by Mr. Mashansky that identified very limited activity that could take place on the property. The, the activity that was identified in that letter was what was followed. I think in the spring, there was, there were violations of that. It was brought to my attention, Mr. Mashansky's attention, and it was stopped immediately. Mr. Mashansky contacted me and said, you can get him to stop or I'm going to go out there and stop. And I notified them and they stopped immediately. And it was, it was, they had, I think, three buses that were on the property. And the direction was you're allowed to have one inoperable bus on the property at the time. So Mr. Duffy is questioning their veracity and their trustworthiness. I'm not here to testify to either one of those, but the borough has the enforcement powers and you have bonding powers and you have the ability to withhold the certificate of occupancy until your engineer, your planner and your zoning officer are satisfied. That's not intended to be my summation, just a response.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Mr. Papa a question? Uh, Mr. Papa, the, what was the smoke coming from that night you witnessed from the building?
There was a bus that had come on the property. And I think, I believe that's what we were standing on the property line, looking through the trees. I think that's what we saw. I think we saw exhaust coming out of a bus.
Out of the building where the bus was?
I, I think it was out of a bus that had just come on the site.
Oh, out of a bus. And what about the issue with the ventilation in the, in the building? Do you have a response to that?
The, the vehicles are turned off when they're in the building.
Okay, so you don't have to turn the vehicle on at all in the building to?
To get it out.
Get it out?
Yeah.
Mr. Papa, while you're up, just one question. I'm sorry. Uh, your observation with that bus, what time of day was that?
Four thirty.
Four, okay, late afternoon.
The meeting was at four and we were outside talking before we started. I have a, a few other things to rebuttal and I thank you for the opportunity. Mr. Wong, do you have restroom dumping there? Your buses have restrooms. Do you dump them there?
No.
Okay. Fire safety regulations, do you have a fire permit to operate? Did the firemen come in and give you an inspection?
We do inspect the fire extinguisher.
I'm sorry.
The fire extinguisher.
Yeah, but they're operating now, Ken. They're operating now. How could they be trusted? How, this is a very important question. How long would a non-operable bus be on your property? Buses that don't run?
I would, I, I could not give you the exact number, it depends on the, uh, couple of days.
Another, another part that you can't enforce. They could always say they're waiting for a part and the bus could be there for months and years. Do you, uh, do you have a permit for the trailer that's on your property? Yeah, a permit.
We don't have trailer on my property.
You, you'll see it in pictures as a trailer on the property.
Mr. Mashansky said we're allowed to have one trailer for, to use for storage of our.
Okay, so I.
There's a letter from Mr. Mashansky from January, we're allowed to have one trailer for storage of tools. And it was a temporary until.
Just asking. So I don't understand our enforcement agency in town. Mr. Pape says they had no authority to operate, but yet they have authority to have a storage trail around a property. One goes with the other. You know what I mean? One more question. I, Mr. Pape covered this and I'm just going to reinvent, uh, ask again. Can we have a deed restriction on the deed? No driveway on the southern portion of that property. It was mortalized in two thousand and one and Mr. Berlou just ignored it. And that's where all the problems started. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I was going to ask Mr. Duffy a question. Mr. Duffy, how many buses have you seen parked on the site at any given time?
Five.
Five? And what, what are the fumes? Do you issue with fumes?
Ask Mr. Ken, he was at my house and seen the fumes. I told him, we live with that.
Well, forget about seeing, about smelling, is it?
Yeah, the fumes are terrible. You'll, I'm, I'm, I'm trying not to go over everything. Other neighbors will take each part because it affects them the most. And, and the fumes are futile. And if they park eight buses there and the workers come in in the morning and eight buses start in the morning, look what kind of fumes you're getting.
The storms we had recently, have you seen an improvement in the drainage?
No.
The?
Jeff will tell you that.
Okay.
Go to his house.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'm trying to be calm.
I swear you and, or tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but.
Absolutely.
All right, you're under oath.
Jeffrey, last name is S H A U T E. One sixteen Merritt Avenue. Uh, Mr. Duffy said most of everything, but there are questions that I have. Let's start from the back first. I got a really stupid question. If you're only going to work till five o'clock at night, why would you need more lighting on the garage? Oh, now it's for security. Okay. They have not been working from eight to five. They're there till seven, eight o'clock at night. On the weekends, I'm usually down the shore, but when I come home on a Sunday night at five o'clock, they're still working. That's on Sunday. Can't account for every Sunday, but there's been quite a few. So when they're telling you they're not, they are. Like Duffy says, we can't beat a policeman for these people. As far as the drainage, I don't know when you look at stuff, but usually if you want to see if there's water, you go after it rains. You didn't look at my house and that's where the water's coming through the backyard. I spent over six thousand dollars. First, I had to build a berm in my yard to keep the water away from my house. Now that the water ran close to my house, the sand along the side of the bucket house has settled. So we had to put more dirt in because the water that does rain seeps into the basement still. The roadway is the problem. It's been graded improperly. Berlou threw a couple bucket loads of dirt there. It keeps some of the water out, but it still comes through the yard, especially with the heavy rains. As I told you last year, been, been there since nineteen ninety-eight, never had water in my yard before with that roadway. It's got to be addressed. Somebody please address it. This, this thing with the power washing. Can I ask you, do you know where the sanitary store is on the property? Do you know where it is? Why don't you show them where it is?
Sanitary?
Sanitary. No, no, show, show them where it starts between the buildings. You see that spotted between the buildings there? They're power washing the buses there. I've got a picture on my phone, I couldn't get it developed today quick enough. What? Can't act that quick and I'm, I'm not going to keep watching this. They had a bus there with all the doors open, the engine compartment open, and he's power washing. And you know where it's going? Into the sanitary store because the cover's off. Don't tell me you're not dumping toilets there. I don't know if you can see on those pictures, there's a two inch PVC pipe that comes out of the building and runs to the sanitary store. I don't know what that's for, but I would have to suggest they're empty and they're waste. I don't know what that's for, but I would have to suggest they're empty and they're waste. I can't, I can't go on site to prove it, but I'm gonna guess at it. As far as the asphalt grindings, it's rained so hard in the front of the yard, the asphalt grindings are showing up because the dirt washed away. They gotta get rid of the asphalt grindings to do any kind of vegetation. You said you're core board? You have the books from our last meeting with Berlou? I showed you the pictures of the dozer pushing the, the grindings in there. You all saw it. It was over a foot deep. There was over 50 tandem loads. I showed you the pictures. I don't know where your core board, but it's there. And that's your problem with your, your drainage. The water runs over top of that. It can't get into the ground. Any dirt that's at the bottom of the hill is over the drain. It's perked through, and it's probably clogged. Okay, somebody's gotta put a camera in there. I don't know how you're gonna get it in there because the inlet's on one side, the outlet's on the other side. And the water coming out of the outlet is flooded in Decker's farm. So, the drainage system isn't working properly because it's not coming out of the outflow. It's going over the outflow. I don't, I don't know what else I could tell you is, but if you let this thing go through, we're gonna be here. I'll be in court with this next time, and I don't wanna spend any more money. That's pretty much all I have to say. And as far as fumes, when they work on the buses, they're not changing windshield wipers and cleaning windows. They're changing motors, okay? When you change a motor, what's the first thing you do? You start it up to make sure it runs right. And what do you do with that? You rev it up, and you rev it up for five minutes, okay, till it gets hot. So, you're the diesel guy? Am I wrong? Okay. Enough said. Thank you.
Good evening. Paula Duffy, 111 Merritt Avenue. I have one, I'm sorry.
Are you just asking a question? Or are you giving observations?
I'm gonna ask a question, and then I'm just gonna read something.
All right, let me swear to you and raise your right hand. Do you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do. Thank you. What is the difference between maintenance and repair? Are you only changing oil there? You're changing tires, cleaning the inside of the buses? I mean, so if the buses come and the bathrooms are full, you just leave them like that? Yes. So, you just change the oil there?
Oil and then do the small, uh, maintenance. If for the major repair, we're going to the dealership.
Maintenance such as what?
Oil change.
So, that's all you do there is oil change?
Oil change, and then do the small fix.
Small fix, like what?
Not engine part, because all the engine transmission part, we're going to the dealership.
Okay. I'm just gonna basically sum up what everyone else, uh, my husband and my neighbor Jeff said. I'm curious as to why someone's allowed to purchase a property, operate on it, and then ask for changes and variances. Shouldn't these variances and waivers be obtained before they begin operating their business? The company in question here has not fulfilled the issues of buffering the property from the residential neighbors along the jug handle or removing the millings, which will prevent growth of any kind. Excuse me. The owners made it a point, they came to our house to let us know they wanna be good neighbors. Good neighbors without pressure would fulfill their obligations, which their attorney knew about before the purchase. They currently own a bus company. They should be aware of the environmental issues which need to be addressed. Who told them it was permissible to operate outside the parameters of regulations? The property does not meet their needs without variances or waivers, which compromise the health and standard of living of several residents who have lived here, there for over 30 years. It's like déjà vu. Once they're on that property, the owners merrily go on their way, blissfully ignoring codes and regulations. Why do we have to bring these items to their attention and yours? Who's going to ensure that they do not exceed the codes and regulations? Why do we, the residents of several, have to monitor this business as we had to do in the past for four years? Nowhere in my tax bill is there a discount for code enforcing. Quite simply, it's a time to say no. We, the residents of your town, do not deserve to be bullied and ignored, and then dragged once again into litigation to secure the health, well-being, and environmental safety of our families and our neighbors. Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, you're under oath.
Okay, I live on 113 Merritt Avenue. My name is Zbigniew Lesniak.
How do you spell that?
And last name is L-E-S-N-I-A-K.
Your address again?
113 Merritt Avenue.
Thank you.
Well, the smoke is undisputable. It's so much smoke coming in from diesel engine, and winter time is even worse because engine gotta be heated up. And, and engine, diesel engine, the pump, if it's regulated perfectly, maybe gonna be less smoke. But they never regulated perfectly. That's why you see in a parkway either blue smoke or black smoke coming from the diesel engine. This is same thing going on with this, eh, operation. You could imagine if I go with one bus on the front of their house and park, and run the engine in the morning, like this morning today, 7:45 exactly, guy came, start the engine, and ran. Mondays, maybe three o'clock, two o'clock, I don't remember the time. I, I forgot my telephone. I got my telephone. He revved up the engine, and beep, beep, beep. This morning was beep, 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 too, because it stayed low. Before then, I don't know who stopped them, but they run the engine for two, three hours. Two, three hours, not one. Couple engine, two, three hours. And evidently, somebody told them it's the state law, three minutes, not longer, you're supposed to run the engine. That, that is another thing. And, eh, they told me they're gonna maintain the proper over the fence. I got poison ivy. Twice I caught the poison ivy. Three, four feet stick around out of, out of their property. I can't go and cut it down because that's their property. And I wish they maintained the proper. Another thing, you bring up the runoff. I lived there, and Dicker used to have it from east to west. Pitch, toast the proper, toast his, eh, because it was two Dickers. The Dicker who owned the acre and a point eight, he used to have a runoff from the building to the proper. And water was slowly dipping progressively to the proper. Now, Morlov came. What he did? He put the trees between the Dickers, Dickers Farm, and this, to make a wall and plant the trees, which is okay, but he created bottleneck, bottleneck. All the water now comes down this way. Doesn't go to the Dicker property because it's a wall. And follow down, and, eh, Morlov put pipe, drainage pipe, maybe, I would say, three feet high. Five, five or four pipes. I got the picture. And he filled it up with, eh, bluestone, silicon stone. He did not fill it up with, eh, sand or anything like this, or bluestone, and I got the picture to prove it. And he created bottleneck. And all the water from the, eh, this property, what are we talking about? Comes out to the Dicker, and it's, it's a river there. River, like it's heavy rain. And it stayed there for three, four days before drains. That's what I wanna say. Thank you. And I hope somebody maintains this poison ivy.
I got one more.
Yeah, but wait a minute, Mr. Duffy.
I'm trying to...
Mr. Duffy, let me see if somebody else is wanting to speak. Does anybody else wanna speak besides Mr. Duffy? All right, Mr. Duffy.
I just wanna try to draw a picture for you. You know Raritan Valley Bus Company, Hellridge Bus Company? Beautiful buses, same name, same color. The buses that we see going in and out of there are all different colors. No names on them. Some have names, which is telling me they're used buses that they bought. Now, Hellridge and, and Raritan Valley, you, if they say they got 10 buses, all of them look the same. They have 10 buses. One day, this one'll have purple, this one'll have gray, this one's white, coach on it, this, eh... So, if you grant them all the waivers, how do I know what bus is theirs and what bus is an outsider? I have no idea. You'll have no idea. Another part you can't enforce. I'm just trying to show the picture. These are used buses that probably have six to 700,000 miles on them. They're not, as you say, have the new filters and stuff, okay? Because a brand-new coach runs between $600,000 and $700,000. And if you want a wheelchair accessible, it's nine. So, I'm just, I, I don't wanna put them out of business, just trying to protect myself. If that's what they can use, use buses, it's great. But they're not with all the new filters and, and stuff. Yeah, there's no technology in, in these buses. And I wouldn't know if it's theirs or they're sneaking and outsider to do repair work. Thank you. Boss called.
Anybody else like to speak?
Yeah, I have one more thing I'd like to say.
All right.
If they only own 15 buses, that's what they said, right? Why do we need 10 spots for broken-down buses? They only run five buses a day? So, Duffy's got a good point. Who are all the other buses there? And, don't have a picture, but you guys could drive by anytime you want. There's a bus over there right now with no tires, no wheels, no doors, no nothing on it. That's not maintenance. That's a torn-down bus. So, something else is going on there, okay? So, I'm gonna suggest they're maintaining other people's buses also. And I'll let it stay at that.
There's no other person I'd like to make a motion against, public. We should propose. All favor?
Oh, yes.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, may I ask for a five-to-10-minute recess to convene with my clients in the conference room? Thank you. We'll be back on the record in less than 10 minutes. We'll be back on the record in less than 10 minutes. Mr. Chair, a number of concerns that were raised by board members, concerns raised by our neighbors, require that we ask for an adjournment to see if we can find a way to address, if not all, most of those concerns. I think with a concerted effort, we can. And would respectfully ask if this board would allow us to be adjourned to a date in September. I think we're going to need about five or six weeks to meet with borough representatives and then to come up with revisions on our plan. So if there's a meeting towards the end of September, that would be ideal if it meets with your approval.
September 17th.
The late 60 days already. How many times are you going to give them the leg?
As many as we need to present a proper application to the board. I am hopeful. September 17th may be a little bit snug, but I'll ask you to place this on. If we're not ready, I'll notify you in ample time to create a further date.
So we would need a motion to, from somebody to, um, to accept, to carry to September 17th with no further notice. We'll do a roll call. Mr. Cantal? Mr. Mueller?
Yes.
Ms. Sataka?
Yes.
Mr. Velosen?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Councilman Zabrowski?
I don't know if I can comment on that, but I have a question. And actually, fellow board member raised this, and that is, we'd actually, or some of us would actually like to have permission or an opportunity to inspect the property. We don't, obviously, we've never been on there because we don't want to. It's private property, but within that time period, I think some of us would probably benefit from having that inspection.
Open invitation. If you would like someone from our team there when you're inspecting, just tell us. But open invitation, councilman.
Thank you. Oh, yes.
And Chairman Tai.
Yeah, yeah. Knock on the door.
So they could go through me and I can give Mr. Pape's office a phone call.
Sure.
Just for the public, you will not receive another certified mailing. This will be heard on September 17th back here, same place, same time. Okay?
Can I ask a question?
I mean, is it regarding the adjournment? Well, because it's.
Hopefully.
At this point, it's just adjourned to September 17th and the board will decide from there.
Until next month, is he going to keep having their business run?
No, public portion is closed, Mr. Chairman.
That's something to be dealt with, with the township code officer after this meeting.
Yeah. And just one comment about visiting the site. Your counsel will be the, but there's the open public meetings, no more than three. You know, that's all, at a time. You're all welcome, but no more than three on the property at a time.
Chairman, I have a question. Um, I'm just trying to follow this. This, tonight here is for an application for site plan approval. Why are there buses on the site? Was there some kind of pre-approval? I mean, I thought this was the first application to get approval.
There is no pre-approval. This is the first application requesting this relief.
Why are there buses on the site?
That's something that I'm going to go over with our client. There was a letter that allowed one bus on the property. I'm going to go over it with our clients as to what activities are taking place. I learned some things this evening. We're going to spend some time addressing it.
And one other thing. If part of your site plan is to have a washing station for any type of whatever you're washing, there should be some kind of a stall where that is a separate area to wash the area and it's drained to a proper facility. I question whether in fact it's going into a sanitary sewer. But I'm thinking that whatever it's being washed or any type of area for specific washing, it should be sent into a proper drainage area.
I thank you all. See you September 17th.
Next on the agenda, old business, new business, administrative matters. Our next meeting is August 20th. Matt, was there anything up and coming for August 20th? Yeah, I don't know how to say it either. Okay, great. So that we'll have a minor subdivision. And then we'll also have our two areas in need of redevelopment for Main Street and Crossman and Ernston Road and Mini Mall Drive. There'll be that hearing as well. Do you want to take a motion to open to the public? All in favor? Opposed?
Anybody for the public like to speak about?
Right now?
Unrelated to the application. Unrelated.
Related to the application.
Oh, no, no.
All right, take a motion to close the public portion.
Motion, close.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. Make motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Opposed, the ayes have it.
All right, good night, everybody.